Meeting to order. We would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for joining. We're here for the purpose of new member orientation. Ms. Kowalski is on her way. I think she's running late for her presentation. With that, we begin the motion to approve the meeting agenda. Ms. Downey, is there a second? Okay. Got a second. All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Two, three, four, five. All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. James.
Thank you. Welcome to orientation. I'll start out and just let each person introduce themselves and just kind of what their role is, just literally 30 seconds. Just don't want to assume that we all know each other.
Yeah, you've got to use Mr. Microphone.
Sasha, overhand, Director of Communications. Amy Tracy, Chief Academic Officer.
Ann Carabao, Deputy Superintendent.
My fore chief of PPS, Sergeant.
Shemene Johnson, I am the Info Chief. You know, there's a clock.
Thank you. So, we've put together just a packet of information for you that we hope is going to be informational. We've put it in print so that you'll have it, so you can go back and pull if we say something tonight and want to go back and then read it again. The contents is right there on page two when you open it up. So, we've got everything by page number, so it'll be easy for you to go back if you make notes on a page. I want to start just by pointing out on page three, kind of the organizational chart, and you'll notice it's as of December 29th, because sometimes organizational charts will change according to who's coming and who's going. Or, when I started, for instance, in July, I felt like our finance office was just, it was too overtaxed, and so we did a restructuring where Ann ended up taking food service, transportation, kind of did some reconfiguring. On the far left-hand side, you'll see those, the Headmaster, the Program Coordinator for Research, Director for Educational Technology, that's actually Chief Technology now, the title changed. All of those are not connected at the top because they go straight to me. So, that was part of that restructuring. We also have the Communications, which reports directly to me, and then, of course, the Assistant Superintendent. But it kind of gives you an idea of all the different roles that are happening underneath each one of these departments. So, on the next page, I don't know where Dan went. Does somebody mind jumping out there and just see if he's, he's supposed to be doing facilities, he might be able to grab something. But while we're grabbing him, normally Sean is, who are our new CFO, would have been here. He doesn't officially start until next week. But on page five, that's the Bloom-Shapiro Process, and I don't want to assume everybody's heard about that, but it really is a process in order to, Danny, you can come down here if you want.
I'm going to rest here.
Yeah, because Peter left. And it really is about getting a good, solid process for our capital project, so we know how much has been spent, where we are in the project. And what I've done for you here is just provide kind of what part of that task has been completed, because when we go in front of the BET, I'm sure they'll ask about this again, we've reported several times to them. We are in the middle of implementing the very kind of first pieces of that, and right now, we are developing and formalizing a process for tracking and monitoring. But when you look at all the future work, it's a, I mean, this is going to take a long time, and part of this, implementing software, we don't really even have the software right now. So, Sean will have a lot of work to do to continue working closely with the town staff as well, for us to put in a new process. And Danny, I'm going to let you go ahead on your page four and talk about facilities.
As far as major projects, would you press some bullets?
Yeah, press some bullets.
Here, can you use Mr. Microphone, this is probably easier.
It's fine.
All right.
Okay.
So, as far as major projects go, if that's what you want me to continue on, what I want to get into is there's several ways that we review and identify possible projects. One is through KG&amp;D Master Plan, which everybody's heard about. This is that plan in all its glory, 44 pages and about 3,000 lines of information. And it's in a pivot table, we break it down by years, the information can be moved around, manipulated to what we need. It's a very concise plan, as far as I'm concerned. It's a shot in time, though. This was done over 2017, 18. So, obviously, there's been things that have been needed and things that we've decided we don't need over those times. All those changes are reflected in this document. This is a living document that we're the keeper of. Another way we look at identifying projects is through, we do a yearly, I don't want to call it an assessment, but a yearly review of the facilities with the school administrator and the head custodian and one or two of my staff. And we'll meet with the principal, the vice principal, we'll go over items that they would like to see done with the school, wish lists, things that the PTA may want. We'll take that information, put it on the list, see if that's already been maybe identified for years out, whatever. If not, we'll decide to prioritize it where that ends up. The last item that is on here is, that we take care of, is things that come up through the year. I don't mean emergency work, but we may, you know, during the budget cycle, we may encounter, oh, I don't know, a boiler that goes bad. So, we had it in the budget for 2017, we decided to move it up to 2021, and unfortunately, that boiler died a slow, painful death, so we had to get an interim appropriation to fix it. So, that is a perfect example of what this document can do for us, and that's how we determine capital projects. Once we determine the capital projects, the whole process begins that, I think maybe you guys have documents in front of you. We request the funding in the capital budget, which we're in the process of doing. The superintendent forms a feasibility committee. Right now, we have a feasibility committee for JC, the high school entryway in Carterfield. The feasibility committee determines an edspec, if that's required for the project, gets feedback from the different constituents that they report to, whether it's a BET member, RTM or a board member, a member of the GAF in some cases. We've had first responder, Chief, Eevee's been involved, Party Department's been involved. So, that's another way we determine the needs of the project. And I've just went through most of this stuff here. The feasibility committee also determines who the architects or engineers are going to be. We put out an RFP recently for the JC renovation. We've got four finalists that we're going to be reviewing next week. From that, that architect who's selected will be responsible to meet with the committee and to be the creator of the edspec. All four of the groups that we are meeting with have a lot of background in school construction and creating edspec and feasibility, so I think it's a good group of people that we're going to be working with. Once the edspec is created, it goes before the board, the board approves it, denies it, wants to make changes, whatever, then the edspec becomes ours. That is the bible for the project. We live and breathe by what's in the edspec. And if the project were to go for reimbursement from the state, the state weighs heavily in on the edspec. And I don't think we are going for any reimbursement on any of the projects we just listed there.
You could look at the high school in Julian Curtis, it's possible. If the state has no funding, the state's confirmed that for us.
And once the edspec has been approved, the board of ed goes for full cost for the construction. First elect, puts a formal building committee together if the project is for reimbursement. So, that's the difference. Right now, our two committees are feasibility committees, not building committees.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Just a quick question. What determines whether or not the state reimburses us for projects or not? Is there a certain criteria that's eligible?
Yeah, there is the, and I don't know off the top of my head, it's not just whether the state would provide reimbursement, it's whether there's actually any money in the state budget to actually give it to you. So, for certain projects, New Lab, it was a much higher reimbursement rate. For certain projects, like a school rehabilitation, the reimbursement rate may be low. The hurdles to get that money may be high, and the town would need to make a decision as to whether or not they're going to move forward with that. But each project is independently dealt with. We, you know, from our experience with New Lab, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of money in the state at this point, and I don't know how they're going to fund this going forward, but if there is money to be had, it ought to be looked at. It's for the administration who would start that process.
Okay, so we don't factor that into our budget possibility capital plan?
You would not at this point. When you get further down the road, you might factor that in, because basically, what's going to happen is the feasibility committees are going to come back and say, you're lacking in common space, you need a new cafeteria, or you need additional media center or classrooms or whatever that is. That will drive a number that will look like, what is the cost of the project? That'll drive our work, and it'll also drive the ability to go to the state and see whether there's any funding available.
Okay.
Pretty good. And not every project is considered reimbursable by the state. For instance, they're not going to reimburse you for a swimming pool, even though it's part of the school's program, you don't get reimbursed for that, so that's just something I have to think about. So, I think, I feel like...
Danny, can you talk about how the projects were prioritized? It's that kind of little paragraph that's right there, because that's a question that we get when we're out with ETAs, the priority of what building's going first.
Sure. So, as far as the master, the major projects that we've identified, the way they were prioritized is based on need, based on accessibility...
Health and safety.
Accessibility, air quality, health and safety, and program. A lot of our schools are in desperate need of accessibility upgrades, so that took a very high stance in prioritization. So, JC is the first one out of the box. We've done some accessibility to the school, we've put in some ramps on the outside of the school, but in all, it's still not what would be considered ADA compliant. Old Greenwich, if you've ever been there, it's difficult at best if you have somebody with needs trying to get into the building. Your office and your nurse's office are on the second floor of the building that has no elevator. We have difficulties just supplying ramps, not difficult, but we have issues supplying ramps just for voting day to get into the building. So, a lot of our schools have just issues that you don't really think of on a day-to-day basis. So, that's how those, that's how the priorities were set for those particular buildings. The rest of the projects that we consider not major projects, basically, we took the same stance, ADA, life safety, and life safety means sprinkler systems, fire alarms, things like that. A lot of our infrastructure is dated, and unfortunately, because it's dated, it can't be repaired, so we have to do a replacement. And the KG&amp;D Assessment, 15-year plan, Master Plan, has done a pretty good job identifying the age of equipment and when it should be replaced. Other things that we look at is infrastructure meaning, electrical components, electrical service to buildings, HVAC, boilers, the actual building envelope meaning roofs, windows, doors, and doors that also comes under hardware, and that includes safety and security. So, there's a lot of moving parts that, again, this document really helps us decide what the priorities are, and if at the last minute it changes and something else comes out and needs to be changed, we have the ability to, a couple keystrokes, and it gets moved to a different year. So, we're, I'm very thrilled to have this. This was put together by KG&amp;D, manipulated by Lori O'Donnell before she left, so it's a pivot table that provides us with cost us relations that we also have to address that I just learned. So, anything else?
I was going to say, no, go ahead, you're fine. Yep.
Any questions on facilities? I mean, this is, it's a challenging area. I think Dan and working with Lori have done a great job getting us back on track. We get our monthly, as noted here, update on the outstanding projects, on the open projects.
We go look at that.
Yeah, okay, good, because we keep getting questions around maintenance and other things from the RTM when we go for these interims, and Dan's got the plan, and that plan is guiding the work we're doing.
And I might also add, before we put the budget together this year, Dan and Lori did go out to every building, you know, walk the building with the principals, which takes quite a bit of time.
Yep.
Yeah. What we call like our annual projects, those are included in there as well. Right, okay.
And they're added after every yearly meeting we have. And another thing that I want to point out is we also have walkthroughs later in the year called Tools for Schools, which is really just focused on air quality in the school. So, if we had missed, I mean, if we met with the principal and the vice principal and maybe the custodian, and we talked about light projects and new carpets, we might not have seen a stained ceiling tile, which means there's a leak, which means there could be mold growth. So, those things come up when we go through, every year, we spend about an hour to two hours at every school, talking to the teachers, talking to the principal, talking to the nurse, there's usually a PTA representative. We look under sync center in classrooms where, you know, you might not have noticed a leak, but look at there, it's leaking, and we know what happens with leaks. You know, we look at windows to see if there's any moisture getting in around windows. So, it's, it's at least twice a year that we spend a lot of time looking at the facility. Other than, I mean, we're in every building every day, so anything that does come up, I pretty much know by the end of the week.
Dan, it's been very helpful. Thank you for that, and I had the pleasure of working with you a couple times so far, just a little bit, it's been great, thank you.
Next, we have, Sasha's going to share a little bit about communications. Page six.
Great, so the top half of the page is just our process flow for how we like information to come through to staff. So, if any board members have questions, the headline on this flow chart is that it just should always come through the superintendent. The bottom half of the page is just some of the regular communication that you all can expect. So, Tony sends a weekly Friday note, you know, just sort of aggregating the information and updates from the week and flagging anything that's upcoming. We also do every Thursday, our District Digest, which is our weekly digital newsletter. It's by Optin, so if you haven't subscribed yet, I highly recommend it. It's got, it's got, that's good, it's got a great school news and updates on our projects and lots of great pictures from around the district. And then our social media channels, we've got Twitter, it's, our handle is @GPSDistrict. We have our Facebook page, it's still relatively new, but we're getting it up and running as best we can. Any questions?
Don't communicate, man.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on. Michael, you can share a little bit about what you created for that Board docs.
Sure. What you see in the packet is the quick manual that I sent out to all the new members. If any of the new members...
This is his first time on camera here, so I'll just...
If any of the new members want a refresher on, you know, where basically everything is on Board docs for board members, I can send this out. The key things to kind of, that I pointed out are the library where you can do the meta-search of all the districts within Board docs, all of their district clients, as well as how to search our past meetings, and some of the other, the library tools where you can, if all of our budget items for a specific year, or say Cardinal Field, are aggregated, and you can kind of look back. One thing we did that for, people really used it for, was school start time, where you can click on there within the library, and you can see every agenda item that dealt with school start time from its initial, you know, introductory talks through implementation. And the other thing on there is obviously policies, and, you know, PGC is currently transitioning from the PGC model to the CAE model. We're in the middle of that now, actually nearing the end, and at the last business meeting, November 21st business meeting, the annual PGC report was presented. You can find that on Board docs at the reports of committees, it's uploaded there, and that shows some of the policies that have been recently retired. That policy, that process is ongoing, because not, there isn't a one-to-one relation between the PGC policies and the CAE policies. In fact, some of the CAE, the PGC procedures are now board policy, so it's not a direct one-to-one, and there's a crosswalk that was created that they, that they work with. And that process is going to take a little while longer, and then the retirement of the former policies will, again, take more time, and then some new administration regulations will be adopted, administration regulations replace the old procedures, and that's what the administration breaks forward. It's not, it's, board gets a look at it, but they don't approve that, they just approve policy. Questions?
Your docs is your friend.
If you have, I'm always here for questions, just an email or a phone call away.
I'm not in the shared folder, is there anything I need out there? Just trying to...
Only PGC has access to the shared folder, so unless you're on the committee, you're out.
If somebody did need a tutorial, of course, you can always let us know in Board docs. And when I first started, the hardest thing for me, I had been on Board docs previously, but our policies were confusing, because I didn't know what was new and what was old, and so it does get a little tricky, so if you have a question, just reach out. Next, we have our PPS in Special Education. Mary?
Do you have dinner ready, because you're going to be here a while? How many people think of themselves as novices in this area? How much detail? Okay. I'm going to go quickly, stop me if I get to something that you want me to explain further. The first two sections, the first section I just put there, so you know that special ed doesn't operate outside of the context of what goes on at schools, is the early intervention for students who are at risk. There are many kids who experience difficulty during the school year, they don't all have disabilities. So, we have to have a robust, comprehensive way of identifying kids who have challenges, and that's where I look to my friend Irene, who really is the person who works with us in special ed about the early intervention process, because it's important that we have tiered intervention systems that provide supports to kids who may or may not have disabilities, but who are not doing well in school, or not doing, or not accessing education at the rate we would like them to. You hear that referred to as RTI, Response to Intervention. You hear it referred to as MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. You may hear it referred to as SAT, the Students Assistance Teams. PRT at the high school is the pupil review team. You'll hear SRBI, Scientifically Research-Based Intervention. They're all titles, or they all refer to our ability to support kids who are struggling whether or not they have a disability. There's another whole section of the world called Section 504, which is not part of special education. That is for students who have disabilities for whom they substantially limit one of life's functions, but they don't require special education. So, for example, you may have a student who has one leg. One leg substantially limits one of your life functions, which is walking, but you don't need an IEP or special education, what you need are accommodations and modifications. So, it may mean that you take a different gym class, it may mean that an accommodation for you is that you leave class five minutes before it's over, so you walk in the hall before everybody's there. So, Section 504 is really accommodations and modifications. It is for people with disabilities, but it can be any disability. It is also has no funding. So, if anybody with a 504 plan requires any sort of service or piece of equipment that comes out of the special education budget, there is no funding in our district anyway for Section 504. Some districts do things differently. Those students have something called accommodation plans, and they are administered by whomever is named in the plan. Could be a nurse, could be anybody, depending on that particular student's disability. Once you come out of that area, you come into special education, which is IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It was first passed in 1975, and at the time it was passed, the federal government promised 40% of the cost of implementing this law. In 45 years, I think the best they've ever done is 18%. So, it is hugely underfunded and very much regulated by the federal government, but they've never hit the number in terms of federal funding support. IDEA is for children who have been identified as qualifying under one of 13 identified disability categories. And when we go into the identification eligibility meetings, we actually have checklists where we go through to see if the students qualify under those. We are required to evaluate any student for whom we suspect that they have a disability. Sometimes you'll, some of the, I don't know, I would say, the unhappiness with special education comes from when parents believe or suspect that a child has a disability and the school does not. So, we go into a meeting, we put our information on the table, and we say, at this point, we don't suspect that this is a child with a disability. The parents may disagree with us, and then we have resolution options for how we deal with that. But if we do decide that we suspect there's a child with a disability, we go into a full evaluation mode, which has a very strict timeline as to from the start of the evaluation to when we have to make the eligibility determination and present an IEP. We are also required to evaluate every student who attends school in Greenwich, whether or not they are a resident of Greenwich, a resident of Connecticut, or a resident of, or a resident of, you know, any place. If they go to school here, they're ours to evaluate. That's also true of preschool students who attend schools. It's not true of freestanding preschools like Christ Church or something, which is not associated with a K-8 school. So, that means that if a parent of a child who lives in Portchester but attends school at, comment of the sacred word, Greenwich, we're responsible for completing the evaluation process for that student. So, we have to have the first meeting, we have to go out and observe the student, we have to provide the evaluation, we have to make the determination of eligibility. We then send them back to their home district, who is responsible for developing the IEP, and then the home district sends them back to us for the development of a service plan. And that's all part of what's called Child Find. We are also responsible for identifying students in preschools, as I said. So, these are students who are ages three to five. We are responsible under IDEA for beginning service to preschool students on the day they turn three. So, some of the conversations we've been having about setting up preschool classes is complicated by the fact that these kids enter at any point during the school year when they turn three. Some of the students we know about because we have a relationship with the birth to three system, which is Port C of IDEA, part of it is not. These kids can move in, they just become known to us on their third birthday. Some of them are also in programs that we run, and we know that they may have entered as a child with concerns, but then they flip over and we identify them with a disability.
I just, I'm just trying to understand, so you're talking about students who go, like going, jumping to the point you just said about, if we have someone who goes to private school, who doesn't live here, we are required to evaluate them.
Yes.
And then, could you just slowly just go through the process again, just, usually they go back to their home district, then they come back to us, I'm just trying to understand that.
You can't. This is one of the parts of IDEA that frankly makes no sense to me, but it's what we're living with. So, if it's the town in which the school is located, that is responsible for the eligibility and evaluation. It is the town that they live in, the town of residence, that's responsible for the development of the IEP. It is the town of where the school is located that's responsible for what's called a service plan. And a service plan is what we have agreed with our private schools would be the services available to students who attend private schools in Greenwich. They don't have an individual entitlement, they are entitled to whatever we decide to give that group of students. So, we may decide, and I meet with the private school... So we may decide, and I meet with the private schools, we may decide we want to give anybody who's eligible speech. That's all we're going to give. So we develop a service plan for that. We have a meeting with the private schools to determine how we're going to spend our proportional share of dollars.
So we are providing the service at our expense to the students in the private schools? Just to understand.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other interesting, there's something to follow, but then I'll get to you. We are not in Connecticut, something called a full FAP state, Free and Appropriate Public Education. If you live in New York and you go to a private school, New York is a full FAP state. New York districts are required to provide special education to those students who attend private schools. They also provide transportation. That's not true in Connecticut, we are not a full FAP state. So it's not unusual at the beginning of the school year for me to get IEPs from New York residents that say, here's our IEP, when do our services start? And we re-explain every year, that's not the way it is in Connecticut, we don't, we're not responsible for providing those services. So it's the IEP is the responsibility of the home district, but the eligibility and service plan are the district in which the private school is located. There are some towns that have no private schools. We happen to have a number of them. I'm sorry, go.
So I think you may have just clarified one of my questions to your last comment. So if, let's say we have a, so I try to understand this, if a child at Sacred Heart has, their IEP says from whatever town that they live in, say they live in Darien, says that they have dyslexia, and we don't have a service, and they go back to Sacred Heart, and we say we don't have the resources, or we're not providing, we're only providing speech, you have dyslexia, so therefore we don't provide them?
Correct.
Okay, good.
They, but, and they, it's kind of a technicality, but they don't have an individual entitlement. They're only entitled to what the group is entitled to, and that group is private school students in the town of Greenwich.
Okay. Do we end up having any blowback from parents? And I forgive me for keep using the Sacred Heart example, but let's say the dyslexic child at Sacred Heart, their parents disagree because we can't provide services, do we have any, have we faced any blowback from that, which ends up in some kind of legal battle?
Not in service plans. We did have an interesting case where we had a parent who lived here in Greenwich, was attending school in Norwalk, and was, we were having difficulty getting Norwalk to do the evaluation. So when the parent went to due process, they took both us and Norwalk into a due process case. So sometimes it does get messy when you have two towns involved in the whole process.
I bet you think it's more messier when you have another state involved.
That is, yes, and we have had that also. Timelines, the evaluation has to be in the student's native language. We have the capacity in Greenwich to do Spanish fully, Portuguese. If there is any other language, sometimes we will contact the UN and see if they can give us the names of people. We've had to do them in Tagalog, Japanese, things like that. Generally, if we get evaluations from foreign countries, what we do is try and get either like through Google or something, just a general translation of it, so that we can get an idea of who we should go to to get a full translation. But we do get, we do get evaluations from countries where we don't have anybody internally who can read the language or transcribe it. They also have different evaluations in different countries, and they also have different services in different countries. So sometimes it's hard to translate. I just keep on going to Northern.
Karen, Karen's.
To translate what a student was getting in Ireland into an American IEP. So that's Child Find. We are also required to evaluate students who are Greenwich residents, who have been placed by their parents unilaterally in other states. So for example, if you have a parent who places their child in a wilderness program in Montana or Utah, and then says to us, we now suspect our child has a disability and we're making a referral, we are responsible for evaluating them. The first thing we do is we call the district, and I'll use Montana, and say, we've got a student in the Ford therapeutic program, it's in your district, do you evaluate those students? And they can say, no, it's not an approved school for providing education in the state of Montana, we do not have to evaluate students in that program. Then we either have to find somebody in Montana to evaluate that student, or fly somebody to Montana to evaluate that student. Because we are responsible for evaluating our student if they are in a program where the district does not have any responsibility to evaluate them. And we've had to do that in a couple cases here. So the evaluation piece is very complex. I didn't mention at the beginning, IDEA is really a funding mechanism, it's a way to get federal funds in. It's administered through the Department of Education, unlike Section 504, which is administered through the Office of Civil Rights. So it's a funding mechanism for how you get federal dollars in. You follow the rules, you're able to tap into the federal funding dollars. So that's really where that all comes from. But we can't use any of our federal funds for Child Find. We are precluded from using it so that we can't use it for any of our evaluation teams or anything we do through the evaluation process. That's called Child Find. In Greenwich, we use evaluation teams to do our evaluations, primarily to give consistency to the evaluations, but also to take that responsibility off the school, so that they can actually work with the kids in the school without having to do the evaluations. It's pretty time-intensive. Any questions about evaluations? Again, that's the Child Find requirement. So one.
But for parents who choose to do outside evaluations, are there any, I know that there are specific companies that you will accept evaluations from or not, you know, what are the laws or rules based on that?
There are kind of two different things there. There's something, this is a Greenwichism, we call PIPs, which are parent-initiated private evaluations. So any parent can go out and contract with anybody they want to, to get an evaluation, and then they bring it to us and present it to us, and we call those PIPs. We have no requirements for those. Parents can get whoever they want to do them. We are required by law to consider the evaluation. We don't have to follow it, but we have to consider it and give it due weight in making educational decisions. Parents also have the right under the IDEA to ask for something called an IEE, an independent educational evaluation. They must tell us which of our evaluations they disagree with in order to access an IEE, so they can say, the psychological evaluation you did last June, I don't agree with, I want an IEE. We have two choices, well, three choices. They are not entitled to an IEE if they've already gotten one for that evaluation. So you can't double-dip on an evaluation. If they have not already gotten one, we have two choices. We either grant them the IEE, which means we pay for them to go out and find somebody who's an independent evaluator and do that evaluation, or we have to take them to due process and defend our evaluation. It's a difficult decision, because I will tell you, our teams put a lot of time and effort into their evaluations, and I think we produce some pretty good evaluations. An IEE can cost up to $8,000 to $10,000. So we are balancing the, and denying parents an IEE, and going to due process with parents is not a way to make friends and influence people. But you have, you know, we have that pull of what's right for the kid, what's right for the town and fiscally responsible, and what's right for the family. And that's a, that's a tough decision sometimes we make, but we have those two choices. We either grant them the IEE, or we go to due process and defend our evaluation.
You warned us, and you're correct. I personally am on overload right now with what you're saying. But my question to you is that the procedures that you're following and describing right now, are they regulations? State government regulations and not our decisions we have to make in order to make our own procedure?
The IEE provision is part of the federal regulations that are interpreted by the state. So IDEA is federal, the federal regulations are interpreted by the state, and there are states that are regulations. How we determine whether or not to grant an IEE, we have a checklist that we developed in consultation with some other districts in Fairfield County that we use, because we look at, you know, did the, is the evaluation, was it designed to answer the questions? And, you know, there are certain questions we ask. The decision as to whether or not to grant the IEE is made at the team level at the school. They will consult with me.
Consistent with rules that you have to follow?
Yes.
And that rules we make, rules that are made for you, made for all of us.
Again, we use the checklist and go through it and just say, did we answer the questions? Were the tools that we used appropriate and standardized tools? Were they administered in an appropriate way? So we have, we have criteria that we use. And if we can say, yeah, we think this was an appropriate evaluation, then the team makes the decision whether or not they want to go forward and grant the IEE or move forward to due process.
Fantastic, and this is really weird, talking to each other right this close.
I do it all the time.
So I just want to be sure, I'm understanding, my head's spinning right now too. So it's basically the IEE comes into play if someone's not happy with the decision of the evaluation team, is that correct?
No, not the decision of the evaluation team, the evaluation. The decision may be eligibility or not eligibility.
Right.
That's a different.
Okay, this is just about the, if they're not happy with the process?
With the actual evaluation.
If they're not happy with?
If they feel the evaluation missed something that the child had.
The psychological, the eval, the speech eval, that document that comes out, they say.
Once they see the report?
Correct.
Okay, so they get the report, not necessarily whether it's services or not, but they say, I don't agree with the conclusions, for example?
No, I don't agree with the evaluation.
With the evaluation? Okay. And then when you say it costs $8,000 to $10,000, what does that reflect, is that?
All another evaluation.
An additional outside valuations by some third party is where the $8,000 to $10,000 comes from? Okay, just to understand, thank you.
And they, again, they can be cheaper, they can ask for only one, they might only ask for speech, but a full-blown multidisciplinary is pricey. Okay, so that's all evaluation. Now the kid is in, they're eligible, and we develop the IEP. The IEP is a complex document, it is a legal document, so there's a.
Is this working?
No.
No?
Can you hear me if I don't lose it?
So it has a lot of parts and pieces to it that don't apply to every student. It's a long, detailed document, and it's very complex. The state is in the process of re-looking at the IEP and redoing it. If they do, it's probably going to be four years before an IEP comes out. So it's very complex, it is difficult to understand. We apologize profusely, but there's nothing we can do about it, it's the way it is. It really is divided into sections. The first section is something we refer to here in Greenwich as the PLE, the Present Level of Educational Performance. And that describes the student and how they're performing in all the areas, whether it's impacted by their disability or not. The next section is the Goals and Objectives, which are arrived at with the parents. Usually the school drafts something prior to the meeting, gets it to the parents beforehand, and it's finalized at the meeting. No decisions can be made for a child outside of the meeting. No decisions are made outside of the meeting. That's not to say that we don't have planning meetings where we talk about what we would think we would offer, or what the goals and objectives might look at, like, but the final IEP can only be arrived at as a result of a meeting. Yes?
So the draft recommendations are provided to the parents prior to the meeting or at the meeting?
It's always our goal to have it between three and five days before the meeting, if at all possible, so that they can see it and ask any questions beforehand. And then the last section is the Services section. So here's where you're functioning, here's what we think you need to work on in order to overcome the impact of the disability, and then here are the services we believe you need in order to meet those goals and objectives. Special education usually goes on the top line, and all the related services go below that. Related services are those services necessary for you to benefit from your specially-designed instruction. They are not standalone services, they are belated to the specially-designed instruction. So you have special education and related service. The only difference is if you are, speech and language is your disability, your speech and language services can be your special education services. That's the only disability that has that. So we describe how many sessions or how long your services will be, whether or not there'll be push-in services, pull-out services, group services, individual services. It describes what the special education services will be. The other two phrases you'll hear around IEPs are FAP and LRA. FAP is a Free and Appropriate Public Education, that's the purpose of IDEA. Free is pretty easy to understand, appropriate is something we discuss a lot, and the same thing with least restrictive environment. Your definition of least and my definition of least may be very different definitions of least. So both of those phrases are rather ambiguous and cause us difficulty sometimes in meetings. But our expectation is that kids spend as much time as is appropriate in the general education setting, receiving services in there if at all possible, and only pulled out when with supports and services they can't be successfully served in a Gen Ed classroom. Again, we are part of the Gen Ed system, that's where kids belong. The other parts of IDEA, kids if they are required as part of their IEP are entitled to transportation. Transportation is interesting, especially for districts, kids who go out of district. We are as far away from Connecticut as, in Connecticut, as any private school, so everybody's on the merit for much longer than they should be. And it really is unfortunate. But that's where all the private schools are. We do have kids who attend school in New York, but if you're going up to Trumbull or Orange or Ham, it's a long ride for kids.
Do we utilize CES at all?
Yes, we have a large, it's one of our major settings for kids. Extended school year, any student whose IEP requires it, we are required to provide extended school year during the summer. And that's for students who, due to the nature of their disability, experience regression and recruitment issues, meaning they will lose skills and it will take them longer to get them back at the beginning of the year, or because by separating them from education, they would not have opportunities to engage with other students. So we are required to provide extended school year.
Well, actually I have two questions. One was in regards to FAP and LRA. So if you have a student that has an IEP, and at some point you discover that you don't feel that you can provide a Free and Appropriate Education within Gen Ed, and it comes into discussion that you might want outplacement, what is the process for that, for the student and/or for, you know, from the family versus the district? And then my second question is in regards to transportation, in regards to students for private schools. I know we provide busing for private school students based on a formula by the state, but the question is for students that are in private schools, for field trips in special education, I think we provide specialty also transportation?
Let me answer the first question first. And that was if students, if the team feels that they can no longer service a student in school, then they come to PPT, Planning and Placement Team, and they make the recommendation for placement. We try to, if at all possible, get a placement that the parents agree to, so we try to involve them in the decision-making around the process. If we can, sometimes we make a decision which the parents may or may not be happy with. We can only place in state-approved schools. So we do have, this goes back to our conversations about added district placements and settlements. Some of our settlements are because the parent and us, we agree that this child should go to, let's just go back to Convent of the Sacred Heart and went back. We all agree they should go to the Convent of the Sacred Heart, but it's not an approved special education school in Connecticut. So we enter into a settlement agreement with the families, saying, we both agree we're going to send this child to a non-approved, non-state-approved school for education. It's technically a settlement, even though we both agree on the placement, but we can't make the placement. In terms of transportation, some of this is not in my wheelhouse, but we are required to provide transportation, I believe, at the same level that we provided to public school students, to kids in Greenwich. So whatever we provide to every kid, the kids who go to private school are entitled to. We would only enter, I would only get into that picture if we had placed a child in a school in Greenwich. And at this point, I don't believe we have any students that we have placed in schools in Greenwich, so it would not be under the special education transportation requirements. Is that into your question?
It's specialized transportation.
Yeah, especially, the reason I was asking is that, you know, we provide, and there was just recently budget transfers in regards to field trips, and parents were helping to transport their own children, get stipends. But if they're in private school, I know there's a difference, you know, when they do a field trip or they do an added school experience, what we are required to fund for the students that, you know, that recover that are in private schools locally?
So I can't answer that. Alan, I don't know.
We're only required to transport the students to and from school.
We're only required to transport the students to and from school. We don't have to do field trips or anything like that.
Okay, we also have to address whether or not the student requires assistive technology. This is another thing that's becoming more interesting, is all students have their own devices. What is assistive technology for some kids? Right now, for a lot of kids, it's different software, it may be different access. So for some kids who have limited mobility, maybe different ways of accessing computers. It also could be railing machines or different kinds of FM systems for students who are hearing impaired. A slant board, it doesn't have to be high-tech either, it could be low-tech things. But it's whatever the student would need in terms of assistive technology to access their education. We also have to make sure that in any activity that is sponsored by the district, any child with a disability has full participation access. So we do have parents who go to the school plays, we have parents who are part of concerts. I love the Washington trip, not because we have to provide nurses and parents who go and make sure that kids can attend the Washington trip. So they are, you know, chiding with the student, making sure that they can fully access all of those activities, which they should have, clearly. It's just trying to find people sometimes to go to Washington is not always easy.
Hawaii does Washington.
Let me just go through some other things and I'll come back to procedural safeguards. We are required to provide homebound for any students unable to come to school, either because of physical or emotional behavioral reasons. That's through the recommendation of a doctor. We have homebound tutors who go into homes, sometimes we go to libraries and things like that. I did service plans. Procedural safeguards, parents have a whole set of procedural safeguards. They are allowed to dispute anything, any decision that comes out of a team. They can ask for mediation, which is probably the least confrontational process. Parents are in one room, we're in another room, we may or may not have attorneys. State mediator comes and we try to get to some agreement. They can also go to a full-blown hearing. And there are some other, there's resolution sessions, there's some other things we can do. But there are very strict, very prescribed ways of resolving disputes when families disagree with their IEPs. I just want to comment about the grant. Understand IDEA funds that come into the district are designed and mandated to be supplemental, not supplanting. So they must be supplemental to what the district spends, and that's where that concept of maintenance of effort comes into play. We cannot spend less any year on special education than we spent the year before. We must maintain our effort in order to access federal funds.
Even if we have left students' access in our special educational programs?
And we also are required to provide a proportional share of our dollars to private schools. Given the number of private schools we have in town, that's a chunk of our change, of, you know, the money that comes into the district that we much allocate to the private schools.
Even if that is on average?
About $200,000.
And they have the opportunity to use it at any rate that they want to. In, within the orders it prescribed to specific programs?
We meet with them, we meet with them every year. The IDEA grant is a two-year grant, so we decide how that particular grant over the next two years will be spent. But in any year, we're operating under two grants, you're two of one grant, you're one of another grant. They ask for things like a speech therapist to come in, they may ask for workshops or consultation, they've asked for Chromebooks or iPads to provide more access for kids with disabilities in their schools, any number of things. But that's an agreed-upon set of activities or objects that we meet on an annual basis to discuss. And it's supplemental for them, too, and they.
You said we must maintain the same number as a prior year when we get access to the federal funds. What do we get? How much do we get federally?
About $2 million.
Is it that? And we get zero from the state, am I right? BIDCS?
Excuse me?
And we get zero now from the state?
No, IDEA funding is an entitlement grant. You're talking about excess cost?
Yes.
Excess cost comes and goes, we did get excess cost money. The state is, has provided us, but anything over 4.5% of our per pupil is considered excess cost. I don't, it has come and gone, they also do what they call a haircut sometimes off our entitlement.
We always get the least, I know that's true, but.
Then our money goes directly to the town.
Oh, okay, okay.
As does our Medicaid money.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, that was why we brought that up at one of our previous meetings while we talked about the budget. If you have an opinion from an attorney, they will tell you that it's not legal. It should be coming to the school, is right?
Really?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also part of our organization, I didn't put it on there, but I just want you to know that it's called the McKinney-Bento Homeless Act. We are required to provide education to any student who is homeless under McKinney-Bento guidelines. And if they become homeless and live in Greenwich, or like, or in kids in crisis in Greenwich, which is considered, those kids are considered homeless, we are required to provide them with an education unless they, under what's called education stability, want to continue to attend their home district. So there are kids who may be attending school in Bridgeport, because that's where their home district was before they became homeless, and we are required to transport them back to Bridgeport to go to school. We can enter into an agreement with the receiving district to split the funding, but we have to come to an agreement because we have to get that kid, if they choose to maintain their education in their home district, back to their home district. And that's under the McKinney-Bento Homeless Education Act. Safe school climate's part of my, I'll just go through these other things that we do. SEL is part of what we do, positive behavior supports and interventions. And the staff we have at the report of PPS, nurses. Nurses are for sick kids, healthy kids, they do some instruction, they're there for emergencies. Psychologists do testing, they do the triennial testing, we're required to re-establish eligibility every three years, school-based psychologists do that. Our evaluation teams do all the initials. Our social workers are there for family support. They do the social history part of evaluations, and they also are contact for probation, DCF and other agencies. Speech therapists, clearly speech, guidance counselors are involved with both academic advisement, and they also provide other services. We are required to provide service to students through age 21, if their IEPs require it. We have a small program called Community Connections for our students who are ages 18 to 21. They are usually out in the community for the most part, on job sites. They also attend some college classes as audits. We have a relationship with Manhattanville and with UConn-Stanford. And you may see them working around town. We also are partnered this year with Abless on Project Search, which is a project giving employment to kids in their last year of school or young adults. And it's a training program with the expectation of full employment when you're done. We have three students in Project Search this year. I think I gave you the highlights.
Nice.
Any other questions?
I have one last question.
That was a rhetorical question.
I'm good, I'm gonna ask it anyway, I'm a bold chime shop. So as you've said, and I know it is exceptionally, you know, difficult to understand all the ins and outs and all the little details when it comes to these sorts of things, what kind of documentation and materials do you provide to parents who are sort of, who are sort of trying to step into this process? Just so that they have a, even if it's just a brief understanding of what the law is and what their rights are at the start, I mean, do we have documentation and materials that we at least give them to help walk them through the steps? So it helps clear up some of the confusion if they know?
The answer to that question is yes and no. Yes, we give them their procedural safeguards every time, and we make them available to them. Are they understandable? They're complicated, so we give them procedural safeguards. They get safeguards around seclusion and restraint, and they get safeguards regarding transition services. They either get them electronically, they're available on our website, or we have hard copies that we can give families. We ask them at every meeting, you know, do you have them, do you have any questions? I have to say, it's become kind of pro forma. I think we can probably do a better job of making them clearer to parents, but they are given their procedural safeguards or made them aware of them at every meeting.
Only the fact that there are students, and I know that we have special education meetings in town and things like that, that parents who don't have an IEP but still consider themselves as part of the special education aren't included on all of those documents or information. Like I said, students are, say, maybe a five or four, or in the process of getting them. So they sort of miss out on a lot of those opportunities to connect and get the information that's needed. So I don't know if that's something that you might want to consider in your processes to.
We also have something called the Parents' Partners book that's in the website, which is, again, it's, and I would say this honestly, the procedural safeguards are complex, wordy, and difficult to understand. Parents' Partners may be a little too, not as informative as it could be because we tried to make it readable. I think there's probably a happy medium that we need to get to. We need to be a little bit more detailed than we are in Parents' Partners, but clearly the procedural safeguards come from the state, we don't bring those. So they are required documents, and they are, they are heavy reading.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering, because if there was something that would make it slightly easier for parents at least to have a brief overview of, I think that would help clear a lot of confusion and frustration, I think.
We do have it in the Parents' Partners, we do have Parents' Partners on the website.
Just a gentle reminder, Chairman Bernstein has negotiated a time for some of us to leave here at 7:30 for engagement we have to, some of us have to attend. So just a reminder.
So Joe, there's no negotiated time, if you feel it's necessary to get up and go, that's okay. We're taping it so that you can watch the rest.
Thank you for the freedom to do that. Your choice.
We knew that this section was going to be the longest one. I think we'll move pretty swiftly after this. So on to page 12. And this is what often you'll hear people say FOI, FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. Thank you. So the basics really of FOIA, you know, what we would say is just be aware that everything you email is FOI-able, when you're in your role as, you know, a public official, and that you should be using your board email, you should not be using personal email. And if you do use personal email by mistake or by accident and you're, you know, you're answering a question as a board member, it is still FOI-able, even when it's on your personal. We do have a timeline on filling those requests, there's a process for that. If we get an FOI that's tricky, it'll go through the town attorney. But it's just being aware that before you click send, just make sure whatever you're writing, you're comfortable having in the New York Times. And that really is, and when you think of it from that threshold, sometimes it allows people to not hit send and, you know, rewrite the email a little bit differently. Also, just to keep in mind what constitutes a meeting along with that. You'll notice on Friday, and when I do my emails to you, I always put, please do not respond all, just because it's so easy to accidentally click respond all, and then if the full board starts an exchange, it is considered a meeting. So that's why I put that at the top as a reminder all the time. And just questions and answers, these are just some very basics that generally will come up for somebody that could be a new board member. If eight members of the Board of Education attend the same social party, is that okay to congregate? Absolutely it is, you just can't conduct business while you're there. And I would say that's probably one of the hardest pieces because every once in a while someone will say, so what do you think about Cardinal Stadium? And you get, you know, six board members that are at the same winter party, and you can easily constitute a meeting, and somebody that's standing there says, I don't think that that was legal conversation, so just be very aware of it. Can you attend a similar meeting at the same time, like a BET? Absolutely, you're there to listen to their meeting, to gather information, but just know if it's not our meeting, what generally is recommended is that the board spreads out a little bit. Don't sit with three or four or five people all together, and then it helps mitigate that risk that you're going to, again, have an offside conversation or a meeting. And can you group text as a board elect on an agenda item? No, text messages are also FOI-able. So starting a group text from your personal phone is still not allowable. So I think that those are, those are just the highlights, just to be aware that you're always in your professional account as elected to the board.
Just a quick question, allowable, and you're saying it's not allowed, but you're saying it's Freedom of Information Act accessible. It's allowed, you're allowed to do it, it's just you're subject to Freedom of Information Act?
So it's a technical violation of the FOIA statute? Because meetings are supposed to be held in the public? So if you have an exchange by email, you're having an illegal meeting? Right, so the idea of not replying at all is we're making sure we're not doing that. You can have conversations with individual board members. There's also an exception for people with the same political party to meet in a caucus. You can have that. Other than that, there's very few exceptions to that meeting rule. So the idea is we post a meeting, we have our meetings in public. Sometimes we even take public comment, not tonight, this is more of a work session. But you should refrain from those types of group conversations outside of any one of those exceptions, the caucus or committee meeting that's posted.
Right, that's a very important thing.
And just know, when you get an email, and I'll just say this is a best practice, if somebody emails you on your personal account and they're asking you about a school thing, your reply is, as a board member, even though they may be a close personal friend and you've known them forever, when you reply, you remember the Greenwich Board of Education. What I usually do is I forward it to my board address and then reply from there. That way it's captured, I don't need the district coming back to me and asking to review all of my personal emails. So I try to use your board address as early and often as you can.
Any questions? Okay, district curriculum, are we?
So district curriculum, we know and love curriculum, don't we? I think it is important, though, to understand that this is just one small component of what we do under teaching and learning and our academic program and what we provide. And the first statement there is why we exist as an academic team with the program coordinators, instructional coaches, and our special education partners. It really is to create those conditions and put those conditions in place so that our classrooms are whole, that our teachers and students have access to all of the resources, materials, and a standards-based curriculum, high-impact instruction every single day. So what I've outlined here is essentially what you see on the website as well. I thought we were going to have some technology, but that's okay. So I think I can give you the breadcrumbs, if you really just go to the district website and you click on Teaching and Learning and just click into it, you'll see how, what we provide is, again, standards-based curriculum, high-impact instruction, how we make learning personal through those two, and then providing for a personalized professional learning approach. And then we have all of our core academic areas under academics. So if you click into that, you'll see all the other programs that we do provide with a program coordinator. And there's also, what new this year is the District Curriculum button. So if you click on Teaching and Learning again, click on District Curriculum, you're going to see the public facing of the curriculum and what we're providing. But what I've given you here tonight, and I have another document, is what you can access as board members. So you'll see some screenshots of accessing the district curriculum through two places, because if you recall, we're in transition. All of our curriculum is mapped, K-12 in Aspen, through the Curriculum Map Module of that SIS system. And School-A-G came on as a learning management system, as a companion to the curriculum. So what that started out as, how do we curate all the different resources and have a knowledge management system, if you will? We're sharing the knowledge of all of our colleagues across the district. So we were collecting resources and then pushing them out through School-A-G. So they kind of run in parallel with each other. What we've learned is that Aspen is not a one-click philosophy. You have to go through at least seven clicks to get to the maps. So what we're in right now is a transition of moving our curriculum maps over to School-A-G in the District Curriculum and Assessment Group for teachers. And so they have access to that now, and they see the transition is present and ongoing. And ultimately, we want that to be the full ecosystem for teachers, meaning that they have all curriculum, all aligned resources, supplemental resources, whether they're digital or physical, and an opportunity to engage in discussion and share up and out with their colleagues across the district. So you'll have two things. It will be eventually, it's a process, because there's over 380 courses that are mapped within Aspen, and it's, and per the policy and what we've committed to to ensure that we have a very rigorous curriculum. There's a lot of components to it, if you look at a curriculum map, which you saw examples of through science. So it's a matter of how to transfer that over to a different system that operates differently. It's, right, the software's different. So I'm going to give you this quick start guide, and I encourage you to go to the link for School-A-G because you can access Aspen through School-A-G. So the way this redistro comes, what to do and what it will look like. So you'll have a little screenshot to click in. We can have a separate session if you'd like, or one-on-one. I did that a few years ago where I met individually and just, actually, we were doing it before board meetings, I had like 30 minutes before a board meeting pop in, and I can give you kind of like a quick run-through. And this way you can go through School-A-G, see all of the curriculum in there, and then you can also see it in Aspen as well. I do have, in order to go into Aspen, there's a separate. in order to go into Aspen, there's a separate personal username and password for board members only. So I do have that for you as well. And the additional screenshots in here are to just provide you with just quick links on how to click on. And you'll notice in Aspen, if you, once you're in Aspen, it is multiple clicks, which is why being responsive to teachers to migrate everything over into Schoology eventually so that they have everything there in a one-stop shop. But this is just district curriculum, but for academics, anything that wants to come through our office, well. So I also take care of federal grants. We do, we have the translations office embedded within academics, and there's a number of other resources that we provide. Again, our office believes that we are in service of the schools, so any service that they may need, we are there to provide it for them.
So are we not going to be using Aspen at all, or is it just for this, the curriculum purpose?
Correct. Yeah, no, that's our student information system and reporting system. So no, we are not talking about eliminating anything or eliminating Aspen. It's just this particular module within Aspen is just not user-friendly. So we want to move it over. That's all. Just to clarify, because for the new board members, when we engaged in building out the digital learning environment, we were trying to, again, build that system for teachers. Because if you're going to utilize the technology, you have to begin with the curriculum. How are you best going to align? So we thought, let's just go in through Aspen. They already know it. They already use it. Hey, that makes sense. Well, that didn't quite work out for us. And when Schoology came on board, we found that's a better user experience. And so that's why over the years, we've been trying to transition. But no, Aspen is here to stay as our student information system. We are not eliminating it. Take any questions?
All right. We'll keep rolling. Thank you. Technology access, I think this will be a fairly quick one for us, too. The highlights on this, Mike teen could not be here tonight as a sick child. So how to get technical support, supported Greenwich.K-12, that's just good to kind of keep somewhere so that if you do need help with access, that's where you would email. Just letting you know, in the center part, they do handle in our IT department about 12,000 documented tickets on an annual basis. So he's just giving you some good data there. If you turn it over to page 16 on the back side, I would say the, the one thing that you might want to stick in your, you know, wallet here first is that internet access because often when we're out and about, somebody does not have the access to get on. And so we provided that for you just so that if you need to be a guest, we're out in one of our schools. And looking at the technology tips, I do think these are important. We try to, you know, really emphasize to our staff how important these are. Just be sure that, trying to avoid scammers, again, just double checking before you submit information, you know, very careful about what goes across. Your board email as well. And I'll give you an example. Let's say somebody, a parent sends you student data. Look at my child's scores. I'm not, you know, I don't, don't respond to that. If anything, start a new email stream and say, I did receive what you sent. I will follow up with Dr. Jones, and then we'll funnel out to the right people. But you don't want to continually pass student information on it. And sometimes they do that. On number two, keeping your password private. I know that sounds very basic. Be careful what you click on. And this kind of goes back to looking at the phishing websites. And we try to make sure our emails, I know in my previous district last year, we had a phishing situation where it looked like the email was coming from me, from other people. So just be aware that when you see those emails pop in, if it's not the Greenwich.K-12, is that's usually where you can tell. It's the back end of the email that you don't click on and open that. That's something you would just not respond to and let Mike know, or let me know and I'll forward it to Mike. And then email is forever. Just keep in mind that you send and receive district email, and it is archived. So once it's, once you hit send, it's there. So those are just the basics. Any questions on technology? Okay. Human resources, Shema?
For the most part, this is pretty straightforward, but what I want to do is highlight a few things that we are working on. And I'll try to speak through in the interest of time. First area, recruitment, hiring, onboarding, development, and retention of staff. Currently, we are partnering with Connecticut Teach. So we are on the Connecticut State Department of Education's website. Greenwich Public Schools has a link. We had our previous Teacher of the Year share some information about working in our district. But when individuals are interested in teaching in Connecticut, it gives them the opportunity to look at a variety of districts. And we are on a few because not every district is taking advantage of the opportunity. It gives them, it gives them an overview of what Greenwich Public Schools has to offer, and then it allows them to click on the link that will lead to our job listings. Excited about that. We continue to participate in recruitment fairs. We post our leadership positions on the Ed Leadership, which is online, Connecticut, REIT, LinkedIn. I work very close with the State Department to hire professional staff in a variety of ways. There's a certification, there's DSA. Every now and then, we have some individuals that are interested in filling long-term substitute positions in the shortage areas. And we have to find some non-traditional ways to get those individuals where they need to be to work in the district. So I'm, you know, making sure that I stay on top of those things. This year, we are piloting a paraprofessional-to-teacher pipeline, which is another opportunity for individuals who have invested in this district and very interested in opportunities to become a teacher, but have not always had that opportunity for a variety of reasons that we've hindered them, usually financially. They are participating in the Relay Program. And currently, we have three professional assistants that have been active in that program. The next area is labor and employee relations. I meet and communicate with leadership regularly. It gives me an opportunity to get back into the buildings and problem solve and work through various issues that come up. Support staff discipline and accountability, if those are the issues of concern. Coordinating with the town of Greenwich's law department on various legal matters that may come up so that I can make sure that the information that we are sharing is the best so we can make the very best decisions. Currently, we are working closely with the town as they are in the process of making changes to AEP. Our individuals in the department who engage with that system in particular the most have been going through extensive training and weekly conference calls so that they are ready for this rollout in September. The one area that is very interesting to me is that we are going to, I've been told, and we're in the process of making this happen, that AEP can talk with Talented. Right now, whenever we have a new individual that comes on board, we have to set up profiles for any of our teachers through this evaluation system. And now, we can skip some steps when they're on board and then they come, they are here as employees. Once their demographic information is set up through AEP, it will speak to Talented. And we can focus more on, you know, what track they would be in. So we're excited about that. Seems like it may not be a big thing, but when you're managing so many individuals, that's something to get excited about. The performance evaluation and accountability piece is the teacher evaluation process. I spend quite a bit of time managing that system and troubleshooting anything from, I'm locked out of the program, I'm locked out of Talented, can you assist me in getting in? Sometimes it's walking through best ways to complete the program when administrators are working with individuals that may be on support plans, they may be answering questions that teachers have, and just making sure that we're compliant and we're making our deadlines. Other areas of focus in the department, ongoing meetings, regular meetings with GOCA and GEA, making sure that those relationships are intact, sharing concerns, and working together to come up with resolutions that are win-win for both sides. Presenting monitoring reports that might be requested by the board, managing teacher certification requirements, compliance with state reports. This year, we have put in place a newsletter, which we call HR Updates, and that is a monthly report, a monthly newsletter that goes out, and it would include anything that would be a reoccurring question into HR. In addition to giving us an opportunity to collaborate with the town. So if there are changes with benefits or just information that they want us to get out to the general, to all of our employees, we make sure that is captured there. And in terms of some current things that we have in place that we are working with, as I mentioned, Connecticut Teach, which we are excited about. We're always looking for ways to increase our recruitment efforts, just to make sure that we are continuing to recruit high, in higher-quality educators. We are currently working on a promotional video that we are, that would allow us to recruit educators, again, to give us a glimpse of what it's like to work in our district. And I know I've tapped on the shoulders of so many individuals in this room that would be excited and participating with that. The minority recruitment plan is something that needs to be updated. It is on the forefront of our minds, and we have to put something in place so that we can continue to make sure that this is a district that has in front of our children, you know, a diverse teaching staff because that is what the real world looks like. Other than that, our onboarding is now online. You don't have to go through paper and pencil when we have new hires. We're excited about that. We'll click the button before they come and sit with us. They can take care of a lot of that paperwork, which allows our conversations to be really about the first day in or the apartment. And it just makes that onboarding experience more relevant and just not about paper and pencil. We also engage in teacher orientations. We do, we post substitute teacher orientations. I'd say there's like five, six a year. We have another one coming up in January, which gives us an opportunity to just provide them with some tools and resources, go over an introduction to Greenwich Public Schools, some do's and some don'ts. And it also gives me an opportunity to eyeball the peoples that come to or certify and looking for an opportunity to make Greenwich their home. And, I'm trying to rush it through, but I think that's it. Any questions?
You actually touched upon the one thing I did want to ask a question of. I know, you know, what our requirements are basically, our high-quality educators and what their qualifications might be. And you mentioned something in regards to substitutes.
Yes.
I know there's a difference between building subs and long-term subs.
Yes.
But, you know, do, do we have specific requirements for them? How are, you know, how is that laid out?
Yes.
There are differences.
Yes. There's actually three different categories. So we have our day-to-day substitute. And that person must have a bachelor's degree. And it can be an individual that subs anywhere in the district. Oftentimes, they will specify the age group that they prefer to work with, but they can work anywhere, day-to-day. And then there's the building sub that becomes like a part of the staff. Their rate is a little bit higher. Oftentimes, not all of the times, but oftentimes, those are individuals that hold a certification and they have aspirations to become a permanent teacher. And then they have what we call our long-term substitute teachers. Long-term substitute teachers have to have more than a bachelor's degree. They have to be certified in the area that they want to teach. The state requires that any individual that is willing to function in a teaching capacity more than 40 days be certified. There are times, and this is, this is the non-traditional method that I, or non-traditional route that I was referencing, is there are times when you have individuals that are qualified, that are interested in filling a position in our shortage areas, like math and/or science. They hold the degrees, sometimes multiple degrees, sometimes we're engineers, they just don't hold a Connecticut cert. The state requires those individuals to show a minimum of 12 credits in that particular area. There's a special application process and a letter that I would have to write on behalf of that individual so they can occupy that role.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wanting to double check because, you know, sometimes you have day-to-day subs that actually become sort of the long-term sub, for instance. And then you're saying that they teach more than 40 days. I'm supposing it's not, if they, if they teach the same class, right, for more than 40 days, they need to have that return.
Right. That's the only way that they can do that.
And so sometimes in the, if they're in the process, is what you have to look around, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I know you're just here, like, new, inter, but have, do we have many vacancies right now? And are you finding successful candidates to fill what we have during the school year?
Teaching vacancies? No. We have quite a few vacancies for our long-term substitutes. And that's because we have individuals who are going on medical leave, maternity leaves. As a matter of fact, I was just speaking with, you know, Jeremy about three leaves in the PE department across the district. Right now, that's where most of our, our sense of urgency to fill those leaves is where all the right energy is going.
My apologies. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Stick around or get over.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. See you guys soon.
Bye.
Thanks.
Just for the record, my dream job is elementary school PE teacher. So that's what I'm going to do in my next life.
Yes. If it worked for the district, I'd be on the board. We'd be down.
Really cool job.
Need some help to handle tonight.
The next three sections are in, so take your light.
Oh, yes.
So racial imbalance, what I would like to have you pay attention to is the first section, and the fourth section, and the third section.
So we don't have to pay attention to all the second sections, what you're saying?
All right, now it's working. So for the racial imbalance, it's really, it's self-sufficient in reading it. And we do have racially imbalanced schools because of the way our district works, because we value neighborhood schools. So we are going to have some schools that are racially imbalanced. And it can go either way. You just received in Board Docs, an addendum to the enrollment report. So you can go into Board Docs and practice using Board Docs and looking for those particular meetings and going to the board agenda. And then you can click on that actual document. So you can get it that way rather than going in the library. Then summer school, you will be getting a report about summer school next Thursday. We do offer a summer school program here in the district. We are required by law to make sure that we have ESY program, which should look similar to what we offer during the school year. We offer summer school to those students who are not performing at the highest levels, also to those students who want to accelerate their learning or want to make sure that they have opportunities to redo their courses at the high school level. We also have enrichment courses for students during the summer. And we feel it's really important for those students who want to do that because that really helps them to progress through their high school career and through their middle school career, secondary career. For the elementary school students, we want to make sure that they are prepared to reach their potential. So that's why we offer the elementary program. There's also a board policy. I've put some policies in here so that you can refer to them. Yep. Sure. Go ahead.
So with respect to the high school, that they can retake classes? Is there, I'm sure this is spelled out in one of the policies, but do they have to have a certain grade, had failed to meet a certain grade level in order for them to retake a class?
If they, let's say they got a B minus in a course and they wanted it to be an A, they could retake the course. And if they get an A, then they've gotten an A.
Okay. So it's not awaited. It's whatever.
It depends on what course they're taking. Yeah. So they work very closely with their guidance counselor, and then they make that determination as to what they can do and then what impact it will have really on their GPA. Transportation. So we do offer everyone transportation in the district based on how far they live away from the school. For elementary, it's one mile. For middle school, it's one and a half miles. In high school, it's two miles. Magnet schools, depends on what magnet school they apply to and they go to, whether they get transportation or not. And that's also in the transportation policy. So students receive transportation in the following circumstances, the special ones. And that would be, and I think this is important because sometimes we don't realize that we have streets and places in the, in the town that really are not safe. So if students live within the walking distance, can purchase a courtesy pass if we have space available. Now, this year, we had many students at Eastern who really wanted, their parents wanted to buy a bus pass. And unfortunately, we could not. And unfortunately, we could not offer many bus passes, because the buses were filled to capacity and actually overfilled. So we could not do that. But there have been many years where we've been able to do that. Students who live on us within the established walking distance, but the walking routes aren't safe. And that's determined by the police department and by our safety director, Tom Bogkowski. And then students whose IEPs or Section 504 Accommodation Plan stipulate specialized transportation. So those are the special areas where you might have transportation. Then I put in three more things that I thought were really important to go over for you. Crossing guards, they are hired by the police department, and then we, what's the word? We reimburse, thank you so much, we reimburse the police department. So what it does mean is, because the police department hires them, there may be occasional times where there is a crossing guard who is absent. And we just think that's important for you to know. And then there is an appeal process. If somebody determines that they really need to have a bus, and they were told by the director of transportation that they couldn't have it, or they didn't like what was going on, they didn't think that the route was the right route, they can appeal, and what they do is they write to me, and I will review it and go over it with whomever I need to. It could be with Tom Bogowski, it could be looking at the routes and seeing if we can change something. So I think that that's important. The other thing is, is if the parent has a complaint, they can go on the website to transportation, and they can file a report. I also encourage those parents to write to me directly, because sometimes it gets, doesn't get attended to immediately, because there might be, like in the beginning of the year, there are many, many questions and complaints and comments. So I like them to also let me know. And then the private schools, you had that question before. We do give transportation to students who are going to private schools in Greenwich as long as there's 50% of students, their students live in Connecticut. It's not just Greenwich, it's living in Connecticut. So I thought those were important. Then the final thing that I think is important for you to know because of safety is that the bus drivers are, do get background checks, they do have random drug testing. And the bus company works in close proximity with us in trying to make sure that we give the bus drivers and the monitors the training that they need, so that they can get our children safely back and forth to school. So that's transportation. Yep.
The bus contracts, do we negotiate those? Or are they the town?
We negotiate.
And how long are the terms of the bus contracts?
We have two more years. No, we only have one bus contract.
And then they do both coach and regular buses?
Coach is not a contract with the S.T.A. It's just the school buses.
Just the S.T.A., and then if people want to use a coach bus for a trip?
They would contract a charter through Eugene or through themselves, but they have to have a contract.
As long as they have the insurance and so.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
One last question. You mentioned something about monitors. Not every school bus has a monitor, though.
No, not every school bus has a monitor. There are some big buses that have monitors, and there are special education buses that have monitors, if they are needed.
Okay, thank you, Anne. On the next page, it's just the budget process. This is the same chart that was in the budget, I think the budget book is in there. And it really is just a, you know, just a reminder, it's a year-round process. So once we finish the budget, we literally start again. And so right now, we're just right down the very bottom, that November-December window. So we're, you know, almost done, kind of. So on the next piece, we wanted just to put in, this was our period, our financial report that ended in October. And again, it's just because we do these so quickly, and it's making sure you know that you do get this information. What I wanted to point out more than anything, though, is the backend of this report, if you even just flip it over and look at the back page, we get this question a lot about can we complete the projects that we have in the budget? And I think it's kind of something that was maybe held over, where projects were stacking up. And so we provide this publicly now every month, so that everybody can see what is complete. And you can see it in color, a little bit easier than when you're looking at it in black and white. And so our goal will be, again, at the end of the year, we will take all these completes off, and then we will get the new projects, you know, that we're putting forward in our budget, will go on here. But if you really look at how much has been completed, it's a lot. Because a lot of the lines where it looks like there isn't anything, it's because it's a heading line. You know, it's the heading for the area. So my goal is actually to get back in and start graying and shading in those lines, because even visually, I think it will make it easier to see. I was working on that, too.
So you mean at the end of the school year, when the budget's approved, you're just going to revamp this? You know, and do-over as of July 1, a new, a fresh version?
Right. So then we can actually say, we've completed all of this. And somehow, we're going to have to make sure that visually, you can see, okay, we have completed all of this. And I don't know if that'll be a separate document, if you want to know where we were, so that if somebody wants to...
I think that's a good idea, and I think that'd be really helpful for the BET and the OTM to see how much we're actually getting done as a little promotional opportunity. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and they've done a very, a really good job of putting this together, keeping up with it, and again, really getting a lot done. So if you have questions about any of that report, again, I just wanted to point out that you're getting a lot of information on a monthly basis.
And just to point out, on the summary sheet, you can actually figure this out, but there's 234 projects reflected there. Only 124 of them are actually open, so they've closed out 110 projects. So if they continue at that pace, I would imagine the list next year is going to be even that much shorter. Pretty amazing.
So we've tried to give you a big overview of a lot of what goes on. Hopefully, this is helpful information. And, you know, if you have questions along the way, you just, you know, email me, and we'll funnel it out to the person that can get you answers. Any other lasting questions, or anything you were just so hoping to hear tonight that you didn't hear?
Thank you, everybody. I think this is a good way to help ground the new members. Joe, if you're watching, thanks.
And a good reflection.
We wouldn't let you make a motion, but does anybody want to make a motion, Joe?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, Ms. Kowalski. All right, we have a motion, Karen. Is there a second?
Sure.
Miss Hirsch, all those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Miss Hirsch, there. Thank you.